Good morning. Good morning. This public hearing is now called to order. Today is Monday, September 22, 2020-25, and the time is 10:05. I am Lauren Peony, Supervising Associate General Counsel at the New York City Health Department Legal Affairs. Also here today with me are Monica Pollak, Director of Program Compliance and Performance, and Obed Gonzalez, Director of New York City Childcare Service Operations from Childcare. We also have Svetlana Bernyek, an Assistant to the Secretary to the Board of Health, and I believe Joseph Russo, Paralegal and General Counsel. The purpose of today's hearing is to elicit comments to assist the Board of Health in relation to the proposals to amend Article 47, the "childcare programs and family shelter-based drop-off child supervision programs" inside the New York City Health Code. A notice of intention to amend these rules were published in the City Record on Thursday, August 21, 2025. A copy of the first pages of the notices of intention will be provided to the court reporter to include in this record. Persons wishing to speak at this hearing were asked to preregister. When you speak, you will have a limit of three minutes to speak. We do not actually have anyone preregistered to speak today. I do see a few people in the chat in the room, so we might have speakers. If you would like to speak, if you joined and would like to testify, please indicate so in the chat area by writing your name and affiliation, if any, or raise your hand with the hand symbol, and we will unmute you to let you speak one at a time. There is, let me see, now I'll double-check on the chat. Okay, we have a few speakers. I'm gonna go from the top, whoever's asked first. Could we do Rafael Perez Segura from Micasita Preschool as the first speaker?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for all of these changes. The education director changes have helped us a lot already in having a more sustainable culture at Micasita and just offering better care to our children with less burnt-out teachers and directors, so thank you for that. My comment has to do mostly with my hope to expand the qualifications to be a head teacher. And in the written comments, I saw a lot of idea of expanding the list of related fields, and I do support that. I think I also support some form of dynamic process, like there isn't disability law, where, for example, an employee asks for an accommodation, and if it's reasonable and aligns with the goals of the organization, then there can be reasonable accommodations, and the law requires an interactive process to have occurred, but not necessarily has a very strict list of all of the possible accommodations, for example. And so, in a similar way, I was hoping that the Department of Health might consider something similar, but in a way, accommodations for head teacher qualifications. So, through a good faith, interactive conversation with inspectors, be able to have a teacher, let's say, who has a background in clinical psychology, has more than 12 credits in early childhood education, but it doesn't say child psychology, but to be able to have that teacher still be a head teacher. In that sense, I could see the Department of Health also asking schools to make sure that there's additional trainings on the child development, if that's required, and that can also be counted on and the Department of Health could hold accountable schools for that. But so, yeah, in summary, I just wanted to say, I hope the Department of Health can consider a dynamic process through which we can talk and through a place of professionalism and logic about what makes for a strong teacher, given the shortage of teachers who have the exact degrees as named in the list. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll take that into consideration. I would like to turn to the next speaker that put their name into the chat. It's, I apologize if I say this wrong, Nyla Bernard from Little Hennies Daycare, N-I-A-L-A-H. See if we could unmute her or him.
Hi, how are you? It's okay. It's all right, Nyla. It's a complicated name, anyway. I don't really take offense to it. But it was a typo. I'm from Little Genies Daycare. We're located in Queens, New York, in the Jamaica, New York area. We opened up in March of, March of 2024. And although we've been in the daycare field for a while, it's very encouraging to see these changes that is happening with Article 47, because we are at a point where, and I'm pretty sure everyone on this Zoom can relate, we cannot compete with the DOE. And that's even before UPK. It's like, we're open 12 months, so it's not as appeasing to a group teacher that could just go work for, you know, the regular school year, as opposed to coming to daycare. And then, even when it comes down to salary, we're private, so all of the hard work, our enrollment is on us. It's not like we're a public school where children are just walking in the doors and, you know, or being sent from the district and enrolling. So, we have to do the footwork of enrolling our kids, and then we have to do payroll when it comes to the salaries that we have between the ed director and group teacher, when we can't undermine these people's education. If you go to college and you get your degree, you want to get paid what you're worth. And I just feel like the dynamic of daycare, the climate is changing a lot, especially when it comes to having children with special needs. It's a lot of that that we're dealing with at a very rapid rate. And it's, I feel as though daycare is about to be about keeping the kids in a safe place, teaching them, having staff that has patience with these children, because everything that, every parent that I speak to is like, my child is autistic, and this daycare couldn't deal with them, or this one couldn't take them, and they can't go to the district yet because they're not three or four. Early intervention, they have to come get services at a daycare. I've been a lot for my kids. I've been a lot for the kids that I have enrolled in my daycare. Things are getting rough. So, I appreciate you guys for making these changes with the rules. I hope that they stay permanent. It's realistic, because we've, people are getting shut down for the smallest things. Anything can happen. Your ed director's out for a day. They have families. They have other things, and the hours that stretch so long of when they have to be here. We just, we need to do the best we can together, you guys and us, to keep daycare alive, because if the rules get harder and things stay the same, daycare is not going to be able to survive. So, we appreciate it from Little Genies, the changes that are being made, and that's all. Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
No, thank you for your comment. We will take it under consideration. And also, I want to add, if anyone that spoke today wants to also submit or hasn't submitted already a written comment, please do. You can do that in addition. We will turn to our next speaker that put their name in the chat. Lori Torres from Elite Minds Montessori. If we could have her unmuted.
Hi. Do you hear me?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. We also appreciate all of the changes with regards to ed director and with regards to designees, but we really need to, I agree with the other directors with regards to expanding or broadening the accepted fields. That's important, because it's really hard, because there is a huge teacher shortage, and as was said earlier, competing with DOE, it's impossible, right? The other thing is, we are a Montessori-verified school and are close to accreditation, and I feel that that form of education with teachers that are credentialed Montessori educators should also be part of the list of accepted fields, because it is, it is the same as colleges going, you know, they are very, it is a very good way of, form of education, and I feel like it is not recognized by Department of Health, and it should be recognized by Department of Health. So, that's basically, and insurance is increasing, and all of our expenses are increasing, and we need as much support as we can get from Department of Health. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Torres. Let's see, we do have a few more names in the chat, so we'll work our way through. Next one will be Madge Warren from Steppingstone, Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N, if we could locate her and unmute so she can speak.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Madge Warren. Everyone, most people know about Steppingstone Parent Grade School in St. Albans, Queens. Now, we've been in, this school started over 42 years ago or more, and I've seen different stages. I've gone through all the different regulations and changes. And now I'm wondering, what is the real role of the Department of Health? In the beginning, I know there were a lot of support, because I remember when I opened my school started, someone came to visit me and to help me go through the process of getting a license. And I've seen the move from that point, that stage, to where everything is a violation. And I think that's really inconsiderate, and it's difficult for us to cope with the amount of violations that Department of Health come out and visit and issue for very simple reasons. I mean, I remember the time when they would come, they would see something like a little mark breaking the wall, and they would write a letter. I mean, they would leave a warning, and sometime like three weeks, two weeks, they'll be back to see if it's taken care of. And then, that would be the resolution right there. Now, people come into your programs, and they look and they search for the slightest thing, and that's a violation. The minimum cost of one violation is $200. And I think from the fact that we put so much money in our business to make sure that we have an excellent program, and then for us to have to pay all these violations, and nothing serious, nothing dangerous, nothing. And some people come in the programs with an attitude to find big reasons, even to close your program down. So, I just want to bring that to attention. Can we have a better, some more consideration for the work we do for the community? And most of us have great programs, and this is like a setback to us. Can we have more support instead of being penalized for simple things and these fines? That's my piece right now. Can I hear you?
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, we'll turn to our next speaker that put their name in the chat is Nikia Whitson of Brainiac Babies.
Good morning.
Good morning. We can hear you.
Yes. So, I definitely agree with my fellow peers. It has been very difficult for us to hire employees. We come across amazing employees that have bachelor's degree in, let's say, sociology, and they have a minor in early childhood education, and only because they don't have a bachelor's degree in early childhood education, they cannot be head teachers, which I find ridiculous. As a master, myself, in early childhood education, I know that when I first got my associate's degree, it was only 12 credit in ECE in early childhood. So, I'm not understanding why someone that has a bachelor's degree, for example, in sociology and a minor in early childhood cannot be a head teacher, just because of that big, you know, the little slight difference. Also, when it comes to directors, being certified personally, as I am, it was very difficult for those exams. We have great people that walk in with years and knowledge of educational experience and backgrounds with a bachelor's, let's say, in early childhood, but just because they didn't pass those exams, we cannot hire these people, let alone, I've been trying to hire, let's say, a director, and they are asking for 80, 90, $100,000 a year, because we are competing with the Board of Education. They can't, they could just go to the Board of Education and not deal with us. So, it makes it even more impossible for us to get good quality staff in there to help us because of these outrageous, like, requirements that the city is having on us right now. So, I just needed to say that, because we do have teachers currently right now in my center where they have their bachelor's degree. All of them have minors, and none of them, they're all assistants, just because they have a minor and it's not a bachelor's in early childhood. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that someone studying all this should not even be a teacher for a toddler room with a minor in ECE. So, yes, definitely looking into this and helping us out will be so much amazing, and takes all this hard work that we do every day to provide quality childcare, just to get the right people indoors. So, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak on it, and hope we get something done when it comes to this.
Thank you, Ms. Whitson.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we will go to, if there's anyone that wants to speak that hasn't put their name in the chat, please do. I see we have Dr. Jeanette L. Brown that would like to speak next.
Oh, now?
Yes.
Okay, you call your girl like, oh, now. Okay, hi, good morning, everybody. Some of you know, some of you don't, but good morning, everybody. Hope you are well. I want to speak on two points as it relates to the new rules. One, I will say, is definitely a step in the right direction in terms of helping us to be able to better staff our programs with all of the challenges that we know about nationwide. You know, nationwide, the staffing shortage is not a New York City thing, but it's, you know, been, it's been highly publicized. But I want to talk about one of the things that I think needs to be also considered is this enforcement of the study plan teachers. And the enforcement of the study plan teachers states that I think teachers' study plan, please don't quote me, is either five years or seven years around completion of that study plan, whether it's certification or whatever they're aiming for, right? But what's happening in enforcement is, if I'm not in school today, or if the person's not in school today, classrooms are being closed, because they're saying that that person is not qualified. However, if I have seven years to do that, I think we have to decide how we're enforcing this and look at this. You know, if I have seven years to do this, my money may not be right in the fall to enroll in school. Maybe I can't do it every semester consistently, because of my own financial situations, or whatever's going on in our lives. But we can't say that we're giving people X amount of time to do something, but if I'm not doing it that, when, you know, when y'all come, or when y'all think I should be doing it, then not only is the, there's a violation, but the classroom is closed, saying that now you don't have a qualified person in the classroom, even though you're giving them seven years to do it. So, I think that, that kind of abrasive response to that, I think it needs to be kind of looked at. And then, the other thing I want to also mention is this whole idea of certification, qualified qualifications, and those words that we kind of use. And I think at times, these words are used synonymously in terms of certified people being the most qualified people to run classrooms, or even, it's scary for me seeing some of the people that come out of school, that in two years, that they can actually be an education director and run an entire program. That's scary to even think about, when you have people who have been in this field and who have ran childcare for 30 and 40 years, and because they're not certified, they're not considered even, they're not even acknowledged as a person that is on site. And I think that that's something we need to, that the department needs to look at. And you also need to look at the fact that Article 47 has very little to do with education and more to do with facilities and compliance. This is not an educationally-based document. This is based on facilities and compliance. There's a small segment that addresses staffing and education requirements and all of those things, but temperature and refrigerators, all, there's all kinds of facility things in this 54-page document that I do not think that only a certified person is able to do. So, I think there needs to be balance between this idea of qualified versus certified, you know, and qualified may mean 15 years of experience running a childcare building. You understand? And understanding Article 47. People coming out of a master's program, out of Lehman, and some of our well-known city colleges do not know how to run a childcare facility. And so, I think we need to kind of look at that and look, look at this from that perspective. But again, I thank y'all for listening, and I thank y'all for taking these steps, and I hope to see many more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Okay. I don't see any other names in our chat, but I do see that we have a lot of individuals in the room. If anyone would like to speak, please put your name and your title and your organization in the chat. Or you can raise your hand using the symbol. I see, Ms. Bernard, you've raised your hand. Did you want to speak again? You've already spoken once. I don't think you did your full three minutes, so it's, or I can allow you to speak for just one or two more minutes, if that's fine. Can we unmute Ms. Bernard? And then we'll turn to the other speakers.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Okay. I just wanted to say, everybody really made great points just now going over the things. I just wanted to circle back and give you guys a little bit of insight of my experience. By the time, as a new daycare, the process of even getting licensed and having to pay my ed director the whole time she's going through the process with me, the daycare, it took me nine months to get a license, 10 months, really. And I had lost a waiting list of 60 kids during that process, thinking that I was going to open. And I'm in a prime location, like smack dead on the street, a lot of traffic and everything, shelters. But by the time I actually opened and started to operate, the business was in debt. And I probably won't see an income of a dollar of the business until maybe three or four, maybe four years from now. And I just wanted to say that to say that all of this is a domino effect. The fact that when you're getting your license, you have to have the ed director that's going to be there. And then, Department of Health gives you such a hard time, where they're like, oh, we see this person working something, somewhere else. And I'm like, well, I can't tell her to stop working where she's working if my daycare is not even open now, and I'm private-owned. I can't afford to hold all of these things up. And I feel as though Department of Health needs to communicate with daycare centers more on this, because it goes to the business side, it goes to helping the kids, helping the kids get a good education and be around good people. Then it goes to New York City having daycares. It affects us all. It's not like, I mean, I know it seems as though we're against each other when Department of Health comes in and they cite you. I've gotten cited for one fly that the inspector brought in when she opened the door. $700 hit when I go to oath. All of these things play into each other. And in fact, it's not, one will take down the other, is what I mean to say. So, this starts from the beginning, that you open your daycare doors. It doesn't just start when you're licensed, and you have kids, and you have to get the staffing. It's, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. It's not in order. It's not realistic, I should say. And when I started the daycare, especially having a commercial building, and I have a group family daycare as well, which is two different things, but my overhead, I was drowning in debt before I could even see a dollar. And let's keep in mind, when you process ACS vouchers, it's not like HRA, where it goes in the system and you can start billing for your children for that, for those 30 days. I've gone times where ACS has owed me over $15,000, $20,000. And I'm taking the kid, because at the end of the day, what we do, we do it for the community. I'm helping mothers, I'm helping children, I'm helping families that need somewhere to place their kids, so they can go and make money and go to work, because I'm located around shelters. These people have housing vouchers, city FEPs, and if they don't work, then they cannot get placed in their apartments to activate their vouchers to live in. So, this goes back to, again, it being a domino effect. They need somewhere to put their children so that they can go and work and show proof of having job activity. They have ACS vouchers that are provided to them. ACS says it takes five to six weeks before they process your vouchers to get paid. I've gone months, months, without getting paid. And I still have to pay ed directors and group teachers and make sure everything is still paid for, so that if Department of Health comes in, it's like an anxiety. I don't feel like I'm helped when Department of Health comes in. I feel like I'm scared, because the first thing the DOH does is say, we're going to shut you down. This is a voluntary shutdown, because one person, I've had a, I had a group teacher, she has her master's and her bachelor's in early education. And the Department of Health looked me in my eye and said, well, because it's from DeVry, and she's not certified, she can't, she can't be here as an interim ed director for the week, because she doesn't have the qualifications. So, I mean, I just thought that I should note that, that this starts from the beginning of the whole situation. And I do believe as well that the inspectors, they could be overworked a little bit when it comes to the process of opening a daycare. But 10 months paying on a commercial building, by the time I looked up, I was in debt already over $100,000.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. I would like next to speak is Ms. Ariana Passaro, actually, no, sorry. Yes, Ariana Passaro.
Hello. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Passaro.
Hi. Thank you so much. My name is Ariana Passaro, and I'm the ed director at The Learning Experience in Clinton Hill. And I was very excited to see the email come through from the Department of Health about changes, proposed changes to the staffing requirements and the ed director, and ed director designee changes. I'm in hearty agreement with many of my colleagues who have already spoken. From my perspective, our school is open to babies, starting at six weeks old, up through preschool. So, my insight that I want to share is about the need for infant and ones' care, because there's much less, I think, available in the city than care for twos to fives. And I think that the community in Brooklyn is experiencing a greater need for good, quality daycare programs for, that are accepting infants and one-year-olds, because people are going back to work sooner and sooner after having babies and needing to be able to support their family with the income. However, it's a double-edged sword, because while we could open those classrooms and meet the community's need, what's preventing us from doing so is solely the qualifications for lead teachers, because it's extremely difficult to find a teacher who is lead-qualified that is willing to work with infants and one-year-olds. I think the fact, it's been mentioned already, that it's very difficult for us to compete with all of the benefits that are provided by the public school system. And it's therefore very difficult for us to attract those people who could theoretically get a job in a public school, have summers off, have much more paid vacation and holidays, and work with older children. Very, very, very difficult for somebody who is credentialed in that way to make the decision to teach infants or ones. However, our community needs that, and we want to provide it for them. So, I, I just wanted to voice my opinion that I think we need to accept a broader range of majors in order to staff all the classrooms. I think it's a simple shift. I think there's many, many applicants that I have seen come through who have their degree, even a bachelor's, like a four-year degree in psychology, and I cannot even interview them for a position of lead teacher, even though that would allow me to staff up my school adequately. even though that would allow me to staff up my school adequately. So that is my struggle. I also do believe that psychology was accepted as a major during COVID. And then at some point in the last couple of years, it was, it's now being rejected again. So I feel that just a return to accepting that major would be a really meaningful change that the Department of Health could make that would really be in service of its constituency. So that's mainly what I want to share. And thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Passaro, for the comments. We will, we have a few more speakers. So I know Dr. Brown, you want to speak again, but we'll go through the new speakers so we have enough time for everyone. Let's do Marlene Kriegel, if we could do her next.
Okay, now I'm muted. Thank you for your patience. Okay, I actually have a comment followed by a question. I have, I'm an education director for a Head Start program and our hours are from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I understand that all education directors are required to be working the same time. This would be like core hours from 8:00 to 4:00, that I understand. However, this is my question. With an hour, supposedly we're supposed to get an hour lunch break, how does this fit in with the core hours? I mean, I never take a lunch break. But how, I'm asking as far as other education directors, what do you do?
Right now, we're not responding. We're taking in comments. So we'll take your question in. And if there's any, I want to allow you more time to say anything else you would like to say.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kriegel. We'll take that into consideration and then we'll...
Should I put my email in the chat?
What everyone can do is you can put in a written comment. The information we can provide at the end about where to submit, but it's also on the rules website. You can put in a written comment if you would like to, in addition to your, you know, your comment today. Yes. All right. Next, we will do Travis Pugh from Pash Montessori School. P E W.
Yes, Pugh.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm Travis Pugh. I'm the co-executive director of Pachamontessori School. While I would like to see more changes in those proposed, I wanted to at least speak in favor of the proposed rules being made permanent in regard to the education director designate rules. We currently have two licensed non-teaching staff who meet the full education director credential. However, even with that, to actually follow the letter of the rule is fairly difficult. So I think the proposed changes do provide a lot of additional flexibility without diluting the safety or care of the children at our school. The other change that I think is very helpful is the change to the, the proposed change to the two-year-old group teacher credentials. You know, many of the teachers who, in other states, who teach two-year-old toddler classrooms have substantially different requirements here than in New York City. Even in New York State, outside of the city, toddlers define as 18 months to 36 months. And so finding teachers who are looking to teach two-year-old classrooms but meet the more stringent preschool three and up requirements is pretty difficult. So I think the changes make a lot of sense and put the city more in alignment with...
Oh, no. Mr. Pugh has been muted again. Oh, go ahead. Sorry about that.
And you know, all of our lead teachers, even our infant teachers, have full Montessori training, which is considered in many states to be equivalent to an early childhood education degree. So the added flexibility of two-year-old group teachers having at least the city requirements of our younger classrooms is very helpful while allowing us to actually find more qualified and experienced teachers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pugh. Sorry about the muting issue, but let's see. I don't see anyone else that has put their name in the chat. If you could please put your name in the chat, if you would like to speak. I'll let Dr. Brown speak again. She didn't speak for her full three minutes. So if you could just keep your comment to a few minutes, we'll allow you to speak again. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I think 4713, room and number, oh, I don't know, II, whatever, that refers to an education director when they're permanently separated from a childcare program. Understanding that education directors are usually, are supposed to be cleared, I guess, through the borough office. And I guess I just want to make sure that clearances, or just put it on record, that definitely expedient clearances is necessary to make all of this work, whether it's to replace an education director within the timeframe that y'all mentioned, the designate, all of those things, clearances have to definitely, the clearance process has to be expedient. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking at the chat and I don't see any additional names. If you could please put your name and your title in the comment, or in the chat, if you'd like to speak. I do see people supplying their contact information. We have on the screen information where you may submit my email. The email is resolutioncomments@health.nyc.gov, or you may submit on the website. You don't have to if you've spoken today, but it would be, we take it under consideration and it is helpful to receive a written comment. Okay, I see Ms. Whitson would like to speak again. Again, I understand you didn't speak for your full three minutes. I'll give you just a brief amount of time to speak again, if you could keep it to, please, just a few minutes. If we could allow Ms. Whitson.
Thank you. Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you.
I just want to piggyback on the gentleman that spoke briefly. He stated that in other states, we know New York City is the best state, but when it comes to, I work with a lot of childcare owners all around the states, and even like the requirements everywhere else, there's never, no other states that require the certifications that we do. A CDA, for example, is sufficient enough for toddler rooms. So them being able, us being able to have the CDA also in place for toddler rooms and infants will be great versus having a CDA and then also having to be in the school, trying to get your associate's degree, is very difficult for these teachers because they already feel that they already did a lot with the CDA and now they also have to go back to college and do all these things which a lot of them don't have the budget for anymore. So just pick, you know, keep in mind that every other state other than New York City is not requiring these extensive requirements when it comes to teachers and directors, and they're running just as good. So I just want you guys to also think about what other states are doing that they don't have this big requirement on top of them and burden versus, you know, New York City. So that's just something that you guys should also look into and just see how everything plays out all around the states.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, we have up on the screen the email that you can submit a written comment to and also the webpage where you can submit on the website. Please put your name if you would like to speak or raise your hand. Okay, I see Ms. Bernard, you've raised your hand and you would like to speak. Again, you've already spoken twice. I will, it's 10:46 and we want to allow enough time for anyone else to sign in and talk, but we can give you a few seconds if that's your comments time, Ms. Bernard.
I just wanted to piggyback off of what she just said and what the other gentleman just said. I feel as though Department of Health could also take into consideration the demographic that most daycares are in because I find, I come across a lot of staff that are great with children, amazing with children, but because they don't have the qualifications of college, they're not considered lead teachers and so forth. And I come across lead teachers that have masters and bachelors in early childhood education, but they don't have the patience for children. So just because you're going to school for something, that doesn't mean that you're passionate about what you do. As opposed to me coming across other staff that are really passionate about dealing with children and have the patience to deal with children, as opposed to somebody who's drowning in student debt. They're not getting paid what they're worth. They're not happy with what they're at. It all goes into the quality of care and knowledge that we can give to the children. So I do think that we should keep that in, that safety and knowledge is the first thing that we should keep first when it comes to the kids. And it's not always just about qualifications because I have a master's degree in health administration and yet I own a daycare. I can't even, there's no position in the daycare that qualifies me enough to be in to deal with children. So that's all I really wanted to say. That, you know, as much as New York could try to stay prestigious with qualifications and things like that, that doesn't mean that the person is gonna give the best care to the children that's needed. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. If anyone has joined since or has been and would like to speak, please put your name in the comment or in the chat, sorry. I'll give it a few minutes to allow anyone to put their name in.
Angel Lawrence raises her hand.
Oh, wonderful. Ms. Lawrence, we can unmute you and allow you to speak.
Hi, good morning. I'm Angel from Brooklyn Free Space. I did have a couple of questions. I mean, this is really helpful. And I agree with a lot of my colleagues of things I've shared, of things that we experience as well. My question is, what happens to the teachers who were grandfathered in with the degrees that were accepted before and are no longer acceptable? What happens when they leave your program? Because sometimes you have really great teachers and for whatever reason, they may have to move on from your program and their degree was acceptable before. And because of the duration of the time that they spent at your program, then they have to move on. What happens to, what happens to these teachers? And again, just to add to the person who just last spoke, you do find teachers that are coming out with the degrees, but they're inexperienced. They don't have the experience or the passion for children. And the degree is just that. So I think there should be a compromise with that. Not to mention, a lot of the providers that come to the daycare too, or come to your school to assess the process, they are not always consistent. So you would have one person telling you something and then you have somebody else telling you something completely different. So there needs to be some level of consistency amongst the workers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We're taking in everyone's comments and we'll review everything that is spoken today. If you would like to speak, please put your name in the chat or raise your hand. It is currently 10:51. The hearing will conclude at 11:00, so we're in our final. If you would like to speak, please do. Please put your name or raise your hand.
Hi, could I just chime in, Lorraine, since it's almost done?
I want to allow anyone else. Let's see. Let me just double check before. Ms. Whitson, you can speak for a little bit if you would like to. I'd like to allow a few minutes at the end in case anyone else would like to speak.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to just tell you, thank you so much. This is really big for us to be able to speak about this. We've been dreading it. We speak to each other all the time. We, I tried plenty of times to even speak to the borough, to everyone that I could think of just to try to get these things done. And being able to speak today about this and you guys considering what we are saying, as you see, we are all aligned, different boroughs, and we still agree to the same things, really, really helps. So I hope this call really helps you guys put the right requirements in place so we could just be, you know, less stressed and focused on the kids rather than focusing on these titles. So we appreciate you very, very much for allowing us to do this.
Thank you. We do have a few more minutes. If anyone would like to speak, please put your name in the chat. Again, please put your name in the chat if you would like to speak. We are here today to solicit comments to assist the Board of Health in relation to the changes to Article 47 that were proposed. Again, Article 47 is the childcare programs and family shelter-based drop-off child supervision programs article. If you, you can still submit a comment, as you can see on the screen, to email at resolutioncomments@health.nyc.gov. Again, that's R E S O L U T I O N C O M M E N T S at health.nyc.gov. Or you may submit on the website, http-rules.cityofnewyork.us. I'm going to give till 10:58 before I conclude, so please, there is still time if you would like to speak. If you are submitting comments, we do ask that you do it as soon as possible and they should, they must be received by 5:00 PM today. So please submit them. All right, it is 10:58. We're still on the record. And since I do not see anyone else that wants to comment, I would like to conclude this hearing. Please, again, submit all comments by 5:00 PM today to the email address or to the website on the screen. Thank you, everyone. The hearing is concluded.